Good afternoon and welcome to the continuation of City Council's budget hearings. This afternoon, we're going to be reviewing the Department of Finance, Director Gula. If you and your team would feel free to come forward. As they come forward, I will turn over to Director McDevitt to give us an overview.
Thank you, Councilman. The Finance Department provides fiscal leadership for the city focused on long-term financial health, while respecting the interests of its residents. It also carries an important responsibility to ensure all entrepreneurs, visionaries, and leaders have the necessary services and city infrastructure to thrive. As the city of Pittsburgh's primary revenue generator, the Finance Department is committed to excellence in financial management for the city, its residents, and its businesses. A quick overview, the Department of Finance has five major divisions, each with several subsections. Those five divisions are Administration and Treasury Division, Business Intelligence Division, Real Estate Division, Tax Compliance Division, and the Cash Management Division. A quick position summary, there's a total of 39.95 positions funded out of the General Fund in the 2024 operating budget, which is a decrease of two and a quarter positions. Those fractions are made up because a portion of those positions are paid through the three taxing bodies. That can be confusing sometimes, but this is just the amount that's paid out of the General Fund. A quick summary of the changes, there is one additional Assistant Tax Compliance Manager, an upgrade of four Technician Accounting to Specialist Tax Compliance. One less Technician Accounting, one less Assistant One Administrative, and there have been, as I mentioned, allocation changes between Finance and the Three Taxing Bodies Trust Fund. Overall, that comes to about a $60,000 increase from 2023, which is about 2.6%. A quick summary of non-personnel changes, the Department of Finance is where the city's pension and debt service payments are budgeted. So approximately 28% of the city's operating budget is housed in the Department of Finance. Overall, there's a $5.8 million increase in their budget. Major changes include about $2.36 million more for pension contributions, $210,000 additional for OPEB, $4.4 million additional for debt service payments, $750,000 less for URA inventory management, $100,000 more for postage, $50,000 less for legal fees, and about $78,000 additional for computer maintenance. And we anticipate taking out a debt issuance of $58.08 million, and that is reflected in the 2024 capital budget for the bond-funded projects. And quickly, the trust funds associated with the Department of Finance, there is, as I mentioned, the Three Taxing Bodies Trust Fund. Expenditures for that include salaries, wages, and other related expenses that are incurred by the city and its employment of personnel related to the maintenance and disposition of the properties owned by the three taxing bodies. And lastly, the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund. So these are, the expenditures are for investments, administrative expenses. When the fund becomes large enough, it will eventually be used to pay retirees other post-employment benefits, which is mostly retiree healthcare. That is all I have.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Director Gula if there's anything you'd like to add.
I'm just going to say that this current budget is a reflection of how our work is currently changing in the Fire and Dance Department due to the fixes and the utilization of our new tax system. So the increase in position salaries is due to us eliminating some lower positions and elevating them actually to tax compliance specialists. So when we used ISAT, a lot of the work that the team did was accounting work. So it was posting payments to tax accounts. And now a lot of that is automated. And so they're actually able to do the work of compliance specialists, which is auditing and monitoring accounts. And so in order to basically account for that current work that they're doing, we elevated those positions. And so now everybody works as a congruent team. There is no separation of, you know, we actually physically separate people from one side of an aisle in an office to another. Now they're all combined and they're doing the same work. So I would expect in the future that we would actually see faster, not only faster processing of some of the tax forms, but more auditing and therefore probably an increase in revenue, especially as it applies to prior year and penalty and interest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, is there anything from members? Okay. Sorry, no rush. Councilman Ward.
Yeah, sorry, I was late. That was quick. Yeah, I did want to ask, and maybe you covered it already, but would your team be open over the next year? If we, can I identify some properties in District Five with structures on them that are in somewhat okay shape? If there are folks in the community who would be interested in buying, you know, in, you know, buying them or otherwise, in maybe just running a pilot to help, you know, maybe like two or three, just to help them get through that, the title clearing process, is that...
I mean, I think we're willing to do anything to try to move properties out of our inventory as long as we're working within the confines of the Treasure Sale Act, which actually dictates what we can and cannot do, as well as the agreement with the three taxing bodies.
Okay.
So as long as we're not violating any of that, we're always willing to work with other departments and even community groups and members in order to put the property back to use and, you know, to be revenue generating for us. It doesn't do us any good to sit there and be decrepit and not be revenue generating. I mean, the reason that it sits within the Finance Department is to protect our taxing interest, as well as that of the school district and the county. So any of the tools that we're able to use and whatever community groups can be a part of that is always welcomed, I would say.
Okay, because, I mean, I know that, I happen to have a neighbor who is going through that process. And, I mean, she was able to do it, but she ended up paying, I don't know, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 to a lawyer to kind of clear the title and all of that. But that might end up being prohibitive to someone who's interested in... I don't know if there's any mechanism within the city to help with that process.
Or, well, if they're purchasing property through the city, if it's property that we took in through the treasure sale and it's housed within the three taxing bodies, when we convey the property to another person outside of the treasure sale, this is after we already have an inventory, we actually quiet, we quiet the title.
Okay.
So when we turn it over to someone else, it's free and clear. If someone were to purchase or bid on a property at treasure sale, we do not sell it free and clear. We clear up any of the municipal liens that are on the title, but we don't touch anything that is outside of that. So if there's construction liens, other tax liens, anything else that is not placed there by the city of Pittsburgh, meaning a demolition lien, a clean and lien, a municipal tax lien, a water bill, then that would be on the buyer then, or the successful bidder at the T-Sale to then quiet or pay those liens that come, those additional liens that would come with the property that are attached. So I don't know why, like if she purchased through us, she would have gotten the title free and clear, so...
I think she ended up doing a conservatorship.
That's a totally different legal process.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's something that not, that we, that's not something that we do. That's a court process and that's right.
Well, in any case, but that would be, if that's something that your office is open to, just sort of even if we just sat down and looked at the properties that are available. I would just like to, I'm sort of simultaneously trying to do the same through the land bank, but, you know, it hasn't really been moving forward necessarily. So I'd love to try it through the city if it's possible. I just know that there's a desire, whether it's just sort of in concept or not, for, you know, amongst residents to, you know, have a shot, right? Have a shot at these properties and doing something with them on their own. And just to see if we could facilitate that. You know, finding properties that would be good candidates, you know, that are in sort of the best shape that a vacant property can be in.
Well, we now have a lot of tools available to us, so it's not just us. Now the Law Department has a real estate section that we work closely with, and we have the land bank and the URA. So all of these entities work together. So we have a lot more tools than we used to. And it may not be like one department or another. It may be a combination of different, all of the different players, depending on what the situation is. And it might be parcel by parcel, because there could be different information attached to each parcel that would tell us where this particular thing needs to go in order for the transaction to happen. But it's worth discussing and seeing what your ideas are.
And just to see, yeah, because I mean, my team had some good ideas, just even of like, you know, highlighting vacant properties in the district that are owned by the city, you know what I mean? Just to kind of get it out there, like, hey, look, these properties are here. And if folks came forward who would, you know, sort of wouldn't necessarily have the means to do it on their own, if we could help, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Schlossberg?
I just needed to get settled. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here and for your presentation. If I missed it in the budget or in this handout, forgive me, what percentage of our pension is currently funded?
We'd say as of the third quarter meeting, which had second quarter results. So we were funded at about 69%.
Okay.
And our assets totaled a billion, a little bit over a billion dollars. So, but that would have been as of June. So we haven't quite had, we're getting ready to have our next quarterly meeting where they will present the third quarter results. So, and possibly some information as to the current month.
Okay. Any, is there any trend throughout a fiscal year from second quarter? Like, can you guess or estimate how it might move in quarter three and quarter four?
So in prior years, I would say maybe that could be true. But I think since COVID, because the markets have seen such volatility, I don't know that I could say with any kind of surety that there is a trend. So currently.
Are there any additional financial, or can you just discuss what is at our disposal in terms of financial or legal mechanisms to stabilize and continue to improve the long-term health of our pension trust fund?
So currently, I know we have the, so there is the parking asset, and that's actually a budgeted amount. So it's not necessarily reliant on whether or not we bring in parking tax or how much parking tax that we have. I don't know that currently I could identify like any other sources of...
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer. One thing that council did as we exited Act 47 was codify a pension funding formula. The prior administration and the current administration both committed to funding the pension at its, at the actuarial recommended contributions each year. And that has done a lot. For a very long time, the city was only putting in what the state said we have to do with, you know, the mandatory municipal obligation. And that frankly wasn't enough. And that's one of the reasons why it hasn't always been funded at appropriate levels. It's a long, wild history of pension funding. I know former council budget director Bannick always routed through it. There were times during which, one, if not two, of all three of our pension plans were completely bankrupt, right? So we've made a lot of progress. And as we continue to fully fund both our MMO, what the actuaries recommend, and pension in addition, it's going to be a continuing influx of money over the next five years of this operating budget. We're always monitoring it and we're always keeping tabs on it.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful. And I was asking also just to see if there's anything that's, you know, maybe a new tool or program or something, because, you know, in the world that I think about, there's like federal funding coming through. I didn't know if in your world, that's, that I don't think about as often, if there's something new like that.
One of the biggest obvious provisions of the American Rescue Plan Act is that funds could not go into debt service or pension. So a lot of times, there is no opportunity to use any of these new funding sources at the state or federal level for this, aside from our regular pension state aid contributions that we receive.
Okay. My other question is about the Three Taxing Bodies Trust Fund, which has a projected beginning balance of about $525,000 and then an expenditure that exceeds that. What happens when a trust fund balance goes into the negative?
So this trust fund in particular, we actually used to fund money from the General Fund into the trust fund in order to cover the, any deficit that we would receive. So we actually, this budget actually will show you that there are no operating transfers from the General Fund into the Three TB. And currently, this was projected at $525,000, but currently there's about $600,000 in the Three Taxing Body Trust Fund. So I can say that even though we would have to ask for money to come from the General Fund to fund that trust fund, should it go under. This trust fund was expected to be completely out of money some years ago. And I'm kind of happy to say that it has not had a deficit and it's done that without any help, which actually kind of shows you that we're moving property out of inventory and actually selling things. And I don't know if you even looked at the legislation that we sent today, but there was a very large number of properties that were submitted for sale.
I did see that.
So we've done a lot of work. My team has done an excellent job with reorganizing everything. We've even actually posted for sale signs on properties. So we're now more actively aggressively selling. We've currently closed on 92 public sales this year as of October. And we have another 101 as of the end of October scheduled to be sold. So it's a huge improvement. So I wouldn't expect that this, that we would be at a deficit. I mean, I can't say that that would be true indefinitely, but currently, this is just a projection. And what we are looking at would not, this would not happen.
Okay.
But in the case that it would, we would have to actually ask for a transfer to fund the account.
If I may as well too. One of the things that has happened since the mayor submitted the budget addresses, the tri-party agreement with the land bank and the URA has finalized, it's moved through execution. I'm not sure if it's fully done in the Controller's Office, but it's getting there. But that agreement accounts for payment by the land bank back to the Three Taxing Bodies Trust Fund, not the city proper, for compensation for our holding costs, what we've done to the property for maintaining it for when the, for sale signs go out, for the stakes that go and things like that, for taking care of it. So what we can do is actually go in and relook at our projected revenue for that trust fund. And that, you know, that amount should carry this out of the projected red.
Okay, right. That's helpful. I'm glad I asked that question, because I just learned a whole lot more about how successful you've been. Is that just internal efficiencies that have helped to increase the number of public sales?
Absolutely. Yep.
Great. I've seen many more. And I've also seen then the land bank sales or, you know, legislation come through individually. So all of that's heading in the right direction. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I'm so happy to talk about the number of the property sales that have gone forward. So members on, the public will remember when we put a chart up on the screen for how many sales and transfers council has done since 2013. And since he's in my office right now, I'm going to give a shout out to Nathan McLaughlin, who I made when he was an intern. Go back through Legistar for all side yards, all transfers to the URA, all treasure sales, and all property reserve sales separately. And I'm looking at the chart that Nathan made, thank you, Nathan, that, so that we could, so I could see and members in the public could see kind of how that has changed over time. So I made him go back to 2013. And so for each year, you can see exactly how many parcels were approved for URA's transfer, side yard sales, treasure sales, et cetera. So like back in 2013, it was 301 to the URA, but 106 treasure sales. And then that tapered off by 2019, 2020 especially, right? We went into COVID, there was zero property reserve, because we'd stopped, the administration stopped property reserve. There was only 12 treasure sales properties and 21 side yard sales and 24 transfers to the, to the URA. But then that has, you know, gone back up. So I have in 2022, there were only 12 treasure sales. And you just said that you did, just closed on 90?
92.
So far, but then these other ones are, the ones we approved provisionally today is, right?
They're waiting in the queue, right?
Right, so you have really, I think I've said it this way before, you restarted the engine of property sales for the state, so I really appreciate that.
I will say too, that part of that is actually holding purchasers accountable. They get a 60-day window once that we achieve quiet title and draft a deed. We send them a closing letter and say that, you know, now it's time to come and pick up your deed and pay for your property. And you have, you know, a certain period of time in which to do so. And if you don't, then, and we send a reminder letter, but if you don't, then you forfeit your sale. And part, and that's, it seems mean maybe, but it's very important, because the city has actually expended money to achieve quiet title. And once they sit there and nobody claims them, we're actually entitled to the hand money that they put down to help recuperate those costs. So what you're seeing too is some more forfeits come through in order to be able to refund ourselves for the money that we've already spent and then turn around and hopefully sell that property then again to someone else who will use it, who will close on it and put it back into productive use. So it's all very important for, for the health of the trust fund specifically. But also, you know, we have to pay our bills and, you know, nothing is for free. So it's something that we have to do. But we haven't, I would say, in the past, been very diligent about doing that, which would have affected the overall financial health of the trust fund as well. So covering all the bases.
And I've noticed this, I guess, I noticed them as, what are they? The property trail sale, like rescind it, we had some today. What was that, it's rescinding or?
Some of them were, they were forfeited.
They forfeit because they didn't close.
Right, they didn't close.
Thank you. To follow up, I think we had a follow-up conversation after like showing you the chart and that you had modified some of the coding in your software so that you can track? And Nathan doesn't have to track anymore?
No.
Is that true?
No.
I thought you said you could generate those reports.
We're working on, and actually, we've been working across the city, actually, with multiple departments, including the URA and the land bank, with sort of running all of these sales and even the transfers, you know, to the URA or to the PLB through EPP. So we can attach all the documents. And everybody that's part of the service or sale service or transfer service from our department to whatever department can track and see how long, it actually gives us a timer. It'll tell us how long when we open it, how long something's been sitting there, waiting to close. So it'll tell us how many days. It actually puts something in someone's work queue to tell them that they need to do something to it or it's sitting there. And it stays there until the service is completed and the property is sold and the deed is transferred, then we close it. So we should be able soon, now that we're all using it, to be able to generate reports that are more complete and the data is more correct than it has been. But we've also been working with city planning to look at some of our properties. In fact, we have a vacant property working group. And a big focus of ours is the data, that's in EPP. And we've been working with IMP and Chris Belasco in order to share, because we all have needs for the data and we all have different types of data to put it all in one area and to hopefully make it public. So it'll be more correct and it'll be available to anybody that needs to see it and in one location. So...
Director, I just want to follow up and say thank you before even add even more to that, because I could show you emails going back from 2014 to various heads of departments about the lack of the internal integrity of the data. And to the back, to the point that literally probably only half of it was even in any kind of spreadsheet form. And it really was like an export from Access. Like, I could show you the export. It was so badly garbled, right? Duplicate columns with notes written all in, even if it was a number field, just all kinds. It was chaotic. And so this has been a 10-year project, I know, to get us to what you're talking about today. And it really is the reason why you're allowed, what has enabled you to know what you have and to make it available to the public, whether that's through the land bank, the URA, or for our own auctions. We, it wasn't even, the lists weren't even there to really know and inventory what we had. So, sorry, Director.
No, I was just going to add, EPP is ePropertiesPlus for the public. There is the public-facing portal that has highlights of some of our properties, a map with all of the parcels plotted. And then what Director Gula was saying on the backend, there's a whole non-public-facing side of it where we're routing all of these administrative functions through.
Yep. It's fantastic. And I know like half of it literally wasn't even in lists. It was just in paper and it needed to be uploaded and entered. And that's honestly how some of the properties fell through, kind of just fell into the void, as I've been using that as a phrase for years. Sometimes we knew it was there, it was still like just stuck in the bureaucratic courts, you know, title clearing. But there were other properties that literally, it was just like a piece of paper that might have been on the floor under someone's desk, it was that bad, right? And so you have come so far and I'm really, really grateful. And that's what's gotten us to be able to be at this moment. I think I also heard you say that the Three TB was projected to be at $500,000, but in fact, it's at $600,000. So it's over budget.
Currently, that's the beginning, the starting budget, I guess, or the starting balance that was projected for the budget.
And at this point, that number is from a month ago.
Right, got it.
And as things change and posted, it's a moving target with respect to the fixed budget document.
Well done. Well done, team, for sure.
That's all them.
Yeah, I really, really appreciate it. I know that, you know, we've been talking about this kind of since you moved into your position and we can really see the difference. Just moving on, one thing that we, again, I want to continue talking, not during today's budget hearing, but that we've gone back and forth with is another entire set of data, which is not the treasure sale tax delinquent data or tax, you know, tax lien data, but just delinquent properties, which is a different, really a different category. Those ones that may be only, you know, a few months or years. And thus the whole kind of tangled contract with Jordan Tax Service. We went through this again at PWSA where we wanted to see, like, I asked a question, can I forgive liens that are under $300, right? Why do we, why are we leaving properties? Are we being equitable, right? Is there, is there an equity negative impact on Pittsburgh's citizens? And the answer was always like, well, we can't do anything about it because we sold all the liens to Jordan Tax. And PWSA, we ended that tax there, so that it is something that we can talk and look at now. And so similarly, it is just another form of privatization, the sales of tax liens to outside collectors. And cities rightfully, and we should also be questioning whether that is what is the best, the best course action now. So we'll keep talking about that. So I appreciate it, but I won't take any more time today. And I think that's all I have. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. I guess just to follow up on Councilwoman Gross's point regarding Jordan Tax Services. Part of it is my understanding, and before you came in, Director Gula... part of it is my understanding, and before you came in, Director Gula was sort of speaking to the adjustments they've made internally in order to be able to deal with delinquency better in-house, which long-term actually give us more revenue. But do you, do you, we originally contracted out with Jordan because we didn't have the capacity in-house to go about doing that work. Can you speak to our ability to now move to a better capacity in-house?
So I will say, especially with taking this new tax system to the real estate division now, it will, it will take away a lot of what we do currently manually. So, and what we've done in the past, or we've had to stop doing certain things because we didn't have the staff in order to do them, because what we have available to us requires them to do the process manually. This system will, if it works properly, which it has been, will take a lot of that away. So it will allow the staff then to focus on other things like monitoring delinquency. And in fact, we've started changing some of the real estate, and real estate, we had accounting specialists, which are now tax compliance specialists for the same reason as we changed some of the positions in the business tax section for tax compliance specialists. So we are able to do a lot more with less people and have them focus their work on other things aside from manual, manual entries. So I would say we are in a really good position in order to be able to do and handle delinquent tax payments and payment agreements, especially too, because the public will also have the ability to handle a lot of those things on their own through the current tax portal. So it'll make things easier for someone to pay prior taxes, to file a payment agreement or fill out a payment agreement, request refunds, they can do that if they so choose, all online with the system, and they'll, it should make it easier for everyone. So I would say that, yeah, we're in a really good position to be able to do that.
Thank you. Speaking of sort of capacity, and we've spoken about this previously, but I guess for the purpose of being on the record, we also don't have, excuse me, we also don't have the capacity to also deal with assessments properly, and I believe one of your goals is to also build up capacity for us to then deal with property assessments. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, per the budget, and this is, again, just for the record, there's a decrease in 750,000 less for URA inventory management, and that's because we've returned those dollars to the URA for them to do that work, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, go ahead.
We'll actually see a resolution next week, I believe, ready for introduction, to work through this year's, this pot of funding with the URA, so that'll also be able to kind of help lead into next year for some of that work as well.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, I just want to make sure I heard you on record, the three TB agreement for land bank is complete?
It is, and it is moving through, docusign and signatures have been making their way through.
Okay, all right.
We're this close.
It is so, it is very, very, very.
I mean, that has been a critical, critical tool to making all this work, so to hear that that is now pretty close to complete is wonderful to hear. Is there anything else from members? Madam President, you're online. If you want to speak on mute, if not. Assume she doesn't.
Councilman, I'm sorry, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
We are recessed, thank you.